Good evening, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Reichstein. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. We are here this evening to conduct our 25th work session on City Council Bill 12 dot 0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 24th work session held on Wednesday, March the 4th, we worked on Title 18, Nonconformities, on page 314 through page 326. Today, we will continue our review of Title 19, Enforcement and Appeals, starting on line one of page 327, and we will work on as much as we can during today's session, two-hour session. The Land Use Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page. This is the last title in the text, Title 19. City agencies and the public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page. They have a comment or a question regarding. I encourage everyone to visit the city council's website, which is www.baltimorecitycouncil.com, to stay updated with the section of the bill that the committee is working on at each If you are unable to attend the scheduled work sessions and you wish to provide written comments or amendments, please mail to the Office of Council Services, attention to Jennifer Coats, at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202, or you can email Jennifer Coats at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. The one and only ground rule I have is please turn off your cell phones, Androids, smartphones, or put up a vibration to give respect and courtesy to those who are going to testify. We do have a sign-in sheet in the back if anyone wishes, has amendments or questions on the Title 19. The proposed amendments have been submitted to the committee since the last work session, which was Title 18, and we will not discuss that, we will not discuss those amendments at this time. However, the copy of the amendments are on my colleague's desk. One of the ground rules I had was from the beginning is that we will not go back to other titles because we'll be here forever if we do that. So, this is the last title of the text, Title 19, and we are joined by, it's been a long day, we are joined by the mayor's rep, Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Warrens-Blake. We are also joined by, to my far right, Kara Kunst, representing President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young.
Thank you.
To my far left is the dean of the city council, Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Second to my left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you.
To my immediate right is the vice chair of the committee, Councilman Jim Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by my right, the staff person to the committee, Jennifer Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And at this time, we will start on page 327, Title 19, Enforcement and Appeals. And I see that we have, okay, Councilwoman Clark, on page 327, you have amendments from page, from line 22 to 28, is that correct?
If you will look at page 327, beginning on line A, which is reported violations in certain Basically, what I'm doing is saying that this should apply to all zoning districts in the city. The zoning administrator may issue a notice of violation under this section on receipt of two or more separate statements that describe an unauthorized activity or use in, and I have deleted all those C districts, and substituted and described an unauthorized activity or use in any zoning district located in Baltimore City. Second, give the date, time, and location at which the violation occurred. And, three, are signed by owners or lesses of, I'm adding at least two different properties. In effect, trying to help inspections be more effective by doing what we just finished doing, basically with the health code about barking dogs, which is doing a presumption based on a couple calls from different households about a nuisance situation. In other words, right now, violations of zoning have to be seen by an inspector personally, but he, that, they cannot accept complaints from eyewitnesses to violations, and there's no reason not to, if you've got a couple people from different households saying something's out of whack. So that's why, that's why these, and then, if I may, these enforcement proceedings that apply to this, then, excuse me, buh 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 buh.
That's 320.
Oh, that's the next page.
That's the next page.
Thank you.
So, thank you, these are amendments from Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
I'm sorry, my name's not on the sheet. It's this sheet, and I did it in a hurry and I forgot to put my name on.
Your excuse.
Thank you.
Does planning have any response to one of these amendments?
Not directly. I think we would like to allow Housing to discuss their amendments. They have essentially proposed a replacement of Subtitle I of Title 19 based on aligning it with their other codes for consistency and to make it more enforceable. So I think, Katie Byrne is here from Housing, so I think it might be more logical to...
Because they want to...
They want to replace the entire Subtitle I. So to discuss that before we talk about amendments to Subtitle I.
That's, that's good, yeah. Housing want to...
I think the copies went, of your replacement went out.
Does everybody have a copy? It says, Joan also has...
Joan.
Something here.
Since, since Housing is going to delete, you want to, what do you want, a copy?
I'd like a copy.
You have a copy? Yeah, just wait one minute. Well, when I'm finished with them, I'll call the audience.
Yeah, it looks like this.
Okay, so, I want to introduce yourself. We are joined by Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, who is entering the chambers right now.
Sorry.
You want to...
Sure, would it be easier here or there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please. I know, man. What happened? How does he wake up and say, what's doing? How does he wake up and say, what's happening?
Katie Byrne, on behalf of Department of Housing and Community Development, the, if you take a look at, technically what we're asking to do is, I'm just going to kind of get the technical on the record, replace pages three...
Can you put, can you move the microphone down a little bit?
Sure, I am vertically challenged, so, I get that. All right. So, beginning on page 327, we're seeking to strike all lines, 1 through 31, then on page 328, striking lines 1 through 34, and then on page 329, striking lines 1 through 33, essentially replacing all of Subtitle I, the enforcement section of Title 19. And the reason why we're requesting to do this is to bring it in line with the enforcement provisions of the Building, Fire, and Related Codes, because all notices are issued through our computerized housing program. So if a building code violation goes out, it's served in a particular manner, the notice goes to the owner, the person responsible for the property. It lines, it would line up more closely with our business systems, so zoning enforcement would be treated in the same manner that building enforcement would as well. So, notices of violation would be issued in the same manner, served in the same manner, and matched up with in the same manner, and the penalties would be the same. It's that, it's that way now, but it doesn't jive with the existing business systems. So if we can take a look at what we've proposed, and I can explain how the different sections go forward and how we better for zoning than the way that is proposed currently in the code and the way that zoning enforcement is handled now.
Okay. Wait, 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 I just, so, so, we're going to, you're looking at page 327, page 328, 329...
Correct.
Entirely...
Entirely out?
Because you're going with the existing code that you have right now from Housing?
With the, it matches up with the building code. So, it's not, I mean, Laura, if you want to, it's not that radical a change. It's pretty much what we have in there now, it's just reorganizing it, making it more clear when a zoning violation exists.
Maybe it would be best for...
I just, I just, I mean, when you took, when we looked at this for the first time, you come in with this, I'm not going to blame a mode of being mean-spirited, you're deleting three pages that we have here, and for us to sit here and try to absorb all this, you know what I mean, it may be easier for you because, you know, you work for Housing, but if you can, I mean, I have questions, I have...
Sure, I can absolutely explain it, why we did it.
First of all, we have...
Okay.
We have, that's what I'm saying, we haven't read this.
It might be best to walk through maybe an example?
Sure.
Yeah, Councilwoman, calm down. Calm down, Councilwoman.
Before we begin, there's walk-through, and I have to leave at six, and you don't go backwards, and this is all a bunch of things, but let me say this, Ms. Byrne.
Sure.
The way, the business plan that Housing uses for citations doesn't work. Zoning is even harder to identify violations because some of them have to do with occupancy rates, et cetera.
Agreed.
What you are, what, not you, what Housing is suggesting is that we roll zoning citations into the same inefficient and not particularly well-running citation system that we, inspection and citation system that we have now. No one to blame, it's the system that's so complex and that no one can get through it with anything, with improvements.
And remember, that's Councilwoman Clark's opinion, so...
That's, this is nothing but my opinion.
I understand.
Based on 26 years of experience with this code and citations. Now, I'm not, I don't care if you keep it the way it is because I know you're going to, but not for zoning because it's harder to, it's harder to identify zoning problems personally with an inspector, many times. Sometimes, it's the wrong time of day, they work nine to five, I mean, just, you, you know all the reasons.
Right.
So what I'm trying to do here is create a system that's based not on the building code, but based on precedent set recently by the health code for animal abuse, et cetera, and for resumption based on witnesses. That's what I'm trying to do here. So, well, I just wanted the committee to understand that because by the time we get through this, I'll be on my way to a town hall meeting, and I will never have a chance to talk about it again. My amendments are in, both of them, and I want them to be considered in the, in that context, and I just had to say it before this thing gets lost and I go.
Councilwoman, I mean, are you done? Are you finished?
I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
The thing is, is that, is that, like anyone's amendments, that they put, they're submitting three amendments that we haven't read yet, it's my understanding the law department might have an issue with. Oh, thank you. It's my understanding the law department read this, they may have an issue, I'm assuming. So, it's a lot for us to sit here and read and digest, but they're amendments. So, you know, when the time comes, I mean, we're going to read these, it doesn't, we're not voting on these amendments tonight.
Right.
You know what I mean? We're not going to vote on these. So, you could bring up this, you know, discuss it, and, you know, I know Councilman Craft has a question or a statement, I don't know whether, I mean, regards to the law department, if they want to respond to that too, but Councilman Craft has a question or concern, then we'll go in.
Sure.
No, I just wanted to somewhat tag on to what Councilwoman Clark was saying. I mean, I've just had an opportunity to skim through this, and, you know, you know, one of my questions immediately is, and I keep defaulting to this almost every time I read something now that we write, and that is, you know, service under this code, this is on page 3, 19104D, authorized server, service under this code must be made by a member of the Baltimore City Police Department, okay? Every time I see something that says the Baltimore City Police, that we're telling the Baltimore City Police Department that they must do something, I'm ready to take it out.
It's, well, just, it says, "A member of the Baltimore City Police Department or an official or employee of the city..."
Well, it doesn't matter whether it, we cannot tell a member of the Baltimore City Police Department to do anything. That is what the law department has told us. So we can't put something in a statute that says it must be done by them. So, and that's just one initial thing. So you need to have a conversation with, with Mr. Petro, I'm sure she'll, but that's just one of my first things, and I think the president hit my other thing, other thing is this, these are just suggestions, we're not going to vote on any of these today, and I do want to just say this, I think that the Housing Department is really well-intentioned, and I think the folks over there work hard, but I've been out with the inspectors, just as my colleagues have, and, you know, when I walk on an inspection with the housing inspectors, you know, I don't know what eyes they look through to see what you issue citations on, but they're certainly not looking through the same eyes I am, and, you know, it's, and for zoning inspection, uh...
Well, can I say, we're not putting zoning inspection in the housing inspector's hands. That's not the intention.
You know, there are, you and I both know...
We've had a long conversations, right?
Unless there is a corresponding... Budget line that someone's going to show me in two months, where we're going to be adding a certain number of zoning inspectors to make sure that this happens in a similar circumstance as a housing inspector, I'm not inclined to do this because the zoning inspectors can't handle what they have right now, you know? And so, I'm not going to make more work for them or something that's going to even seem to create more work for them when I can't get them out now to do what they're supposed to do.
It's actually the same, but it's better in that it matches our existing business systems. The way that it was proposed, if you look at the enforcements, there are four different ways we can enforce the zoning code, through citation...
Well, we'll have time to match them all up.
Okay, okay. It's, I mean, I just, what I'm, what I'm, I don't want to give the mis-impression that it's going to be housing inspection that's taking it over. We know we have issues with zoning enforcement. We know that a lot of the violations occur after hours, on the weekend, in areas that a housing inspector would not go into. Councilman Craft, you and I have had a number of exchanges of particular issues, problems in areas. We've, we've pulled in the special investigative unit, and they go after hours on the weekends to investigate the late-night bars, to look at overcrow, as far as unlicensed multi-dwellings, different zoning, illegal zoning activities. So it is a higher class of inspection and a keener eye, more that you need for zoning than you do for the black and white building inspection. I get that, completely get that. But the way that the enforcement provision is written now is based off of the old zoning code, and there aren't enough tools in that tool chest under the old zoning code to really have adequate enforcement. So we have good tools in the building code, so all we did was basically take those tools from the building code, match them up into the zoning code, so that notices of violation are issued correctly, so that they don't have to be reissued, right? So that we maintain a business record internally by using our, our system that we use for housing. I mean, it's a good system for maintaining records, keeping track of violations. So the idea is that we have consistent service. Right now, how you serve a notice under the zoning code and how you serve a notice under the building code is different. So we are trying to create, delete those inconsistencies. So from a, if you think about it from a process perspective, we've matched the process up, but I'm in no way saying that zoning enforcement is the same as building enforcement. And how we do that internally, yeah, is, is a big challenge for us because it requires a different skill set than a base-level housing inspector, which is why for some of these after-hours and complex issues, we're pulling the special investigative unit in. So what I would ask is that if you look at this, and if you have any specific questions with the language, the language was taken directly from the building code as far as, I mean, I know that doesn't give you any comfort, Councilwoman Clark, but it's, what I'm talking about is procedurally, right? The language is taken from the building code. We know it works, we know it's efficient, as from that legal perspective.
That's what we're looking for, efficiency. We're going to have to read these three pages, but, Lena, Mr. Petro, you have...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Lena DePetro from the Law Department. I just wanted to say that I reviewed these today, and I appreciate the effort, and I think there's lots of good ideas in here. I don't think that the enforcement of the building code translates as easily in all cases as, as the amendments might suggest. So I think there's some tweaking that needs to be done, and then there's also the consideration of the land use article that governs our zoning legislation, that does not apply to our building code legislation, so we're constrained in a few places by our authority granted by the state. So I would like the opportunity maybe to respond to the amendments at a time, you know, set by you guys.
Mr. Petro, so after you read that, I need you to send your opinion to the committee.
Sure, that'd be perfect.
And I'm happy to sit down with Mr. Petro, and we can talk about where things came from, and I can have a better understanding.
After you...
That would be perfect.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Well, while you're looking at things, could you please look at the idea of allowing presumption based on witnesses to some zoning violations?
Yeah, I think we can actually address your amendment. If you look at the way that the zoning code is written now, it talks about the zoning administrator, right? And if you look at the definition of unlawful acts, it says it is unlawful for a person to blah da blah da blah da blah da, right? And then in a notice of violation, the zoning administrator may serve a violation notice on any person legally responsible for blah blah blah, if they're in violation. So what that means to me is that if the zoning administrator has sufficient evidence, whether it's from an inspector or from an outside source that's verifiable, then he has the ability to issue a notice of violation. Under the existing code, no. The way that it was worded, so that the zoning administrator had to maybe see it with his own eyes, with a different language, which is similar to what we have in the building code, right, where it's, it doesn't, it doesn't require the zoning administrator to see it, if he has evidence, then he can issue the notice of violation. So for putting the language that you were definitely concerned about, under the old zoning code, it only allowed the zoning administrator to issue a notice of violation if he had two affidavits in certain zones. That didn't really make any sense. Why couldn't he issue it in all of the zones, right? So if we were going to leave the language alone, then why wouldn't it be for all of the zones, which is what you wanted?
I want that.
Right? But we don't have to even go there, if you look at the language...
Explicit language, so that there's no, I, I want the language to be explicit so that it's not, somebody doesn't interpret it the wrong way. So if you're looking at all this, Law Department and the Housing Department, I want it to say what I said, because real, just words that anyone could read and understand that that's doable.
I hear what you're saying, that for you, it's important to be in there, but I just wanted to make the point that I don't think it needs to be in there the way that we've worded the replacement and kind, but you want it in there so that there's no different interpretation. Is that what you're trying to say?
There so that, that people can use this zoning code as a handbook for how to, how, about zoning and about what their rights are. I want it to have as many words that normal people use as possible. Lay people, lay people use.
Yeah, so, piggyback on Councilwoman Clark, who always gets away.
I don't, and if I did, I would question my colleagues, but I like, that this is important.
Yeah, there it is.
But, Ms. Byrne, I have all the respect in the world for what you're saying, you're an attorney. I'm an English teacher.
I ain't one of them.
That's the difference with the way we see things.
Right.
And, and so, I just want words that I, that mean thing, that you can't...
I understand.
Yeah.
So you two...
Well, I mean, if you're working with the Law Department and you're working on this and you keep my words in mind and try to nestle them into all this, that's fine. I don't care who sponsors it, just so it gets in.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else, sir? Thank you for throwing us this curveball.
Anytime.
Ms. Floyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I skimmed through the proposal, and it looks like my questions are still relevant, so I'm going to ask them, and they...
So we can hear it clearly.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure, is that better?
Go ahead.
They, they fall into what Councilwoman Clark was talking about in terms of unders, being, people being able to understand what this, what the code is telling them. These are really questions about this, about this section, and there's the section A and the section B, I think they're both on page 327. So, first, I guess I'll give you my questions. Should I start with B or start with A, based on what we just talked about? B is, okay...
You're on page 327?
327.
Give me, give me the line you're talking about.
Okay. I have... Okay. I have my well-worn copy here. The lines, starting with line five in Section A, when you use the terms, well, that lines five through eight, use the terms learns of and must issue. So that suggests to us that a determination is made that something is or is not a violation. So the question I had on this section was, how would this play out in the event of a complaint by, say, a neighbor that a condition of a PUD or a conditional use is being violated? So based on the proposal, I'm asking, and I can give an example, the proposed language, I'm sorry, not the DHCD proposal, but the proposal that's in the bill. I'm asking how it would play out, and, and I can give a specific example and some specific questions. Where, I'm on Section A, and the, the determination of whether to send something out. Let's say a zoning authorization specifies certain conditions for the placement and maintenance of dumpsters, and neighbors complain to the zoning administrator that the requirements are being violated. So under what circumstances would the zoning administrator, could the zoning administrator decide not to issue a violation notice under this Section A? And then the, the second question is, will the neighbors be informed of the zoning administrator's determination of whether or not a violation has occurred? So these are questions that were brought up by this, the draft of the bill in Section A. And then I have some section, some questions for B.
Just to answer that one, again, as, as Katie mentioned, essentially Title 19 is introduced, is pretty much exactly as the code is today, just pulled out into enforcement. And as you know, we, for planned unit developments or, or other projects, there are complaints that come to the zoning administrator in many different ways, and, and determine inspection and that sort of thing. And we work closely with them on that. The, the drawings actually are kept in our office if they don't have them. So they send out an inspector, review it against the drawings, and any minor amendments that have been approved, and make a determination on violation. And then would go through their normal process.
So my questions are basically about that, that process of determining.
It doesn't match the drawings is the most obvious. That's generally what the issues are with the PUDs. It also could be a use issue. And, and again, every PUD is a little bit different, but most of them say, for example, all uses are permitted in this zone, similar to B2, except the following 10 uses. And if he goes out there and finds one of the 10 uses, that's a violation.
So let's say he decides that there is not a violation. Then, then my question, my second question is, do, and I don't, it's not in the draft, would the neighbors then be informed that the zoning administrator has determined that there is not a violation?
I don't know that there is a procedure for that. I know our staff often gets involved in the middle of those, but that, maybe Katie can help on that.
Generally, when a complaint comes in through 311, it has to be closed out through the zoning administrator, so it's an internal process. So if there is a record and the zoning administrator has to respond, then you'll get a yes or no with a reason either way. Anonymous complaints do come in regularly, and the zoning administrator will go out, take a look, or, you know, or an inspector will go out and take a look and say, was there a violation or not? And then they would maintain, if, you know, when there's an inspection, the result of that inspection is maintained at a record at housing. If a complaint came in and the neighbor asked for a follow-up, then we would follow up.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Now, can I ask my questions about Section B, which is lines 22 through, I guess, 28, I suppose?
22 through 28?
22 through 28. That's Section B, right. So, and I know that Councilwoman had some amendments, but I had some questions. And Mr. Willis isn't here. He, I was hoping he would be the one to answer my questions. But the, the question basically is, how does this section relate to Section A? Is this intended as an, an exception, or is it intended as, as an augmentation? Is the zoning administrator, specifically, is the zoning administrator prohibited from issuing a violation notice unless he receives the two separate signed statements? That's one question. Looking at line 27, do the two signed statements have to give the same date and time for the violation? Do they have to be the exact same violation at the same date and time? And three, under what circumstances could the zoning administrator decide not to issue a violation notice under this section? This is for clarity to understand what, what this is.
This is definitely in addition to, but as I understand housing's procedural recommendations, we can do even better than this. The reason this is in addition to is because, and you'll notice it's in the commercial zones, these are the areas where we typically get a lot of after-hour complaints, and so this was created for those purposes. But we fully support housing suggestion, which broaden it across the board and give the administrator that flexibility, as, as Councilwoman Clark suggested as well. So it's definitely in addition to, not instead of.
Then I guess that as this, as you all work on this, I would urge you for, I would urge you to look at the question of, under what circumstances could the zoning administrator have the two statements but decide not to issue it? And that would be something you probably can't answer today, but I hope you will work on.
Right. I think you were asking specific questions about, would they have to be the same date, same time, those kinds of things that you're asking, or?
Well, if this, this is only about this language. If this language is going away, then it's, it's a moot point, I guess. But, but I am curious about the zoning administrator exercising discretion not to issue, you know, once again, not to issue a, a violation notice. And I think we're gonna see what comes out of this collaboration, and we'll have, may have that question again.
And Ms. Floyd and the public guardian, once, once we, once the, once those two meet, put their heads together, and they give it, they send us, you know, the report, I'm sure that anyone wishes a copy of that can get it from Ms. Jennifer Coates. So, okay?
I will definitely want one, thanks.
I know you will, okay. Anyone else on page 327? 328. You might as well go to 329, too. 327, 328.
I got 328, and then I, I have 328.
Okay, page 328, Councilwoman Clark. That's what, six through 10?
Yes, sir, it is, six through 10. I'm sorry, I'll let me get my sheet of paper. Okay, page 328, lines six to 10. Basically, I've added to enforcement proceedings. So enforcement about these violations may include injunctive proceedings, criminal prosecution, and administrative proceedings, and I'm specifying including stop-work orders, liens for boarding of vacant properties, and immediate termination of use and occupancy permits. I really want immediate termination of use and occupancy permits.
So you're taking or out and putting and, and for that?
And, immediate termination of use and occupancy permits. In other words, I want to specify those, those options the city has, and I want to stress, if you lose your use and occupancy permit, that means something. You can't be there anymore until you do what needs to be done to correct a violation.
Councilwoman Craft, you wanna add to that?
I think what we're, there are two separate things going on here, though. One is a listing of these are types of proceedings.
Yeah.
And then the other ones are actually actions that can be taken out of the proceedings.
I know.
So I don't know that, that they are, they're, they should, they're not conjunctive, they're disjunctive. There should be something, some other way to do this, and I don't know. I know where you're, where you're going.
Yeah, and I-
I'm just not quite sure if this is the right way to get there.
Right. I totally agree with what you're saying.
It's like, one's is, one's types of proceedings, and the other is types of relief.
Relief, and I leave it to the people that we've contracted with to, and others, others who do this drafting for, you know, all the time, to put it someplace. So to move it. I agree with you. It's, it's awkward. It's, it's disjunctive, but I want it in this code somewhere.
The comments that the Law Department liked to make on this section is that we, actually, the land use article has general language about the types of enforcement proceedings that the city can use, and it's, it's very broad. But I think it's kind of silly in a way, because we say the enforcement proceedings may be these three things, but then in 19103, we say, and anything else that you decide is appropriate. So I'm, I'm not sure why we have any of it at all in there.
Because those are the things that don't get done, that people want done because they understand they're effective.
Right, but they can be done, whether they're in there or not.
I need to say the word somewhere. Anything else, or whatever, I'm sorry, I apologize, but whatever that vague language is, it hasn't worked to persuade administrators that they actually can get up the nerve to do something like take away a use and occupancy permit for a zoning violation. And they, they can do it, they just are, I think they're afraid to do it. And if it was written down, they wouldn't be so afraid, because it's a definitive action.
I'm not, I think you'll run into the same issue, whether it's in here or not. I don't think this is gonna solve that problem, it just-
I want little Mrs. McGillicuddy, 88 years old, sitting in the back row at the community meeting, to be able to hold up the zoning code and say, "It says right here you can do that." And I want that, I want language in here that people can point to to give courage to the bureaucracy.
Housing, you wanna?
Well-
You're deleting that page, so what could, could you help her with her language?
Well, I might, I might be able to help a little bit, but, but I don't, I don't think it says exactly what you wanted to say. But in, in our proposed edition on page four, under 19-107, it says additional legal action. So the imposition of penalties does not preclude the city solicitor from instituting appropriate legal action, too. And then you flip it over, prevent unlawful construction, retain, correct, or abate a violation, prevent illegal occupancy of a structure or premises, stop an illegal act, conduct business, or use at a structure on or about the premises. So I think that gets you there.
It gets me, it gets me close. Unfortunately, I hadn't seen this language, but-
Right, 'cause I threw you a curveball.
If I could tweak it a little bit on the way through, I, with some more definit- just a couple of words that have an image to them.
Okay.
But I, I think there's, I think we can work this one through together, but I need, I'm just trying to make this code, parts of it that count, something that someone can point to and say, this can happen, or this cannot happen, and know that they're reading clear language. Not every word of the whole code, all 19 titles, some of it's totally confusing, but the part that counts, and we're in that section now, that people will look at. What can they do? What can the fines be? That's all. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have to leave.
So we're gonna, you're gonna work one out, I mean?
Yeah. We'll, we'll get together and make sure that what we have in here matches what we're allowed to do under state law, and, and more.
And more.
And more, all right.
I'll give Mrs. McGillicuddy a copy when it's been adopted by the Baltimore City Council. She knows not to get her hopes up until it's carved in stone.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else on page 328? Okay, now we are on page 329. So Mary Patch, your members are done, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm leaving. I have to.
Okay, now we are on page 330, and we have Council President Jack Young has amendments on page 330. It's line 11, where he is deleting, deleting the word "working." So it's gonna be, in the case of a violation notice, within 10 days of the date the notice was served. Right? Oh, you wanna respond? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm happy to explain this. Kara Kuntz, Office of Council President Young. Both the Maryland rules and the definitions section of the proposed code explain time computations, specifically that when something is over seven days, whether or not weekends are counted. So the first two Council President amendments to remove the word "working" is simply because "working" here makes time calculated in a different way than it does under the rest of the zoning code. So that's our line 11 amendment, and then the first half of our line 13 to 14 amendment.
Any response on, uh?
No, I have, we have no issues with that. It's, it's substitutively the same. It's effectively 10 working days.
Okay, so, go ahead, Kara. She's, you have two other amendments, right?
Yes. So the amendment number three, which I actually have a small typo on, it should read, delete the words, both "working" and the words "on which notice of."
It's not working days, so we're striking out "working."
It is effectively based on the definition earlier in the code.
Earlier in the code, and the Maryland rules both say seven or more days can include weekends. So if something was issued on a Wednesday, Saturday and Sunday would be included in that 10-day count.
That's right.
So it includes weekends.
It includes weekends if it's 10, if you take working-
Oh, oh. Working days out under the Maryland rule.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
And weekends are included once they exceed seven days. So it's, so this would be 10 days.
Okay, so this would effectively shorten the time.
Right.
I don't think it changes what it is today, because time is computed, I think according to the Maryland laws under the current-
But it does shorten the time of the proposed draft, which was clearly ten working days.
When you take working days out, then you would include Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, if that's the president's intention in the amendment, if that's what the intention is.
I mean, I would defer to law or housing in terms of their experience.
So what he, what's happening here is on line 11, they're saying, in the case of a violation notice, within 10 days of the date the notice was served. So if they served on a Wednesday, right now, currently, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then it goes to Monday. What the president is stating, it would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
I don't think that is how it is today, but I would defer to-
I'm not talking about how it is today. I think we're comparing it to how it is drafted. The way it is drafted, it's very clearly working days, which would, 10 working days would essentially be two weeks, and that was our drafting intention. I don't know if, you know, based on other types of appeals or other things, whether that's typical.
I think what the, when we discussed this, the Law Department thought that the, you know, the way to do it would be use the Maryland rules, calculation of days, Maryland court rules.
I mean, I would be comfortable with that. That would shorten the time, and I don't know if that's reasonable. We're okay with that.
That's what we use for notices of violation. We start, we issue the notice of violation on day one. You know, you start the very next day counting. We count all the way through weekends and holidays. If your day comes on the Sunday, then you go to the next Monday. So it's just, it's pretty standard. We don't use "working." That just kind of throws a-
Okay. We're comfortable with the deletion, then.
Okay.
The Law Department also had a concern. Kara, were you gonna mention this?
The part about the notice?
Yeah.
Yes. That's the second half of my, the sheet. In addition to the words "working," we would like to delete the words "on which notice of" at the end of line 14, and after the words was given, insert the words- of" at the end of line 14, and after the words was given, insert the words "to the applicant." So, we did, there is an interlinated version of this that I think is handed out, so you can see the way the sentence would now read is for that section, too, on lines 13 to 14. "In the case of any other decision, within 10 days of the date the decision was given to the applicant."
I think that language is clear, we have no problem.
We were hoping to make this clearer, both in terms of the time computation and because there isn't really a notice given when, say, a building permit or use and occupancy permit is issued, so we're hoping to give some additional clarity to this section.
Councilman Craft?
No, mine was on the next thing, on the next amendment, on the President's next one, on line 18.
Okay.
Amendment four, is that right?
Yes, our amendment number four, on line 18 of page 330, adds words after the words "for the appeal," we would like to add the words, "and the reason the person is aggrieved." And this is because up at Section A, who may appeal is any person aggrieved by the decision, so the application or form that would be submitted to the zoning administrator should include the grounds for the appeal and the reason that they are aggrieved.
So, my question is essentially, we're saying, we're asking the person to define why they have standing?
No.
Which says, we're saying, who has the grounds to appeal? So, any person aggrieved by the decision, that's the person we're giving standing to appeal, and then if we say down here, "The notice of appeal must specify the grounds for appeal and the reason the person is aggrieved," if we're saying that the only people who can appeal are a person aggrieved by the decision, right?
I would defer to law, but I don't read, there's no reference to standing there.
I mean, we're not saying what aggrieved means, so, Mr. Petro, I'm just, I'm trying to figure it out, so if we don't know, what does aggrieved mean?
I think there is case law that I don't have with me that talks about who an aggrieved party is in a zoning dispute, so I'd be happy to provide that, and I think, you know, that could be utilized by whoever's reviewing the application to determine whether the reasons given are consistent with, you know, court rulings on what aggrieved party means.
Well, if that were the case, then, wouldn't it, and I'm just, if you have a civilian, Ms. McGillicuddy, if Ms. McGillicuddy is there, and there is some legal definition as to what constitutes an aggrieved person in a zoning case, then if the person has to file their notice of appeal, and they have to explain why they are an aggrieved person as defined by the zoning law, and then the zoning administrator says, "Wait a minute, this does not comply with the definition of an aggrieved person under the zoning law," then the appeal gets thrown out because Ms. McGillicuddy didn't know how to describe herself as an aggrieved person. I'm not sure that's where we want to go, or that's not sure what this means, or, I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all.
No, that's not the intention. Could I respond?
Yeah.
On behalf of sort of the intention behind, is not to define aggrieved here, it's simply that if state law tells us who can appeal, and it has to be a person who's aggrieved, then there should be a form, and there's a form that somebody fills out and gives to the zoning administrator to explain that they're appealing this, then there should be a place to specify their grounds and why they're aggrieved, and then if you read down to Section Three, all the zoning administrator determines is that the appeal was timely and complete, not whether or not, you know, the reasons they've listed for their grounds or why they're aggrieved are, you know, good enough, it's just that these are spaces on a form, you're appealing for these grounds, you're aggrieved for this reason, it's just a space to put that information in.
See, I don't read that as a check-off, the form specified, is, I don't know, I guess my question is, are there checkboxes as to what the grounds of the appeal are, or do you, are you writing out why you're appealing? What is it now?
It's a form, and you go to the zoning administrator's office, and it's a narrative, and you write in the basis for your appeal.
That's what I thought.
So, I think they're creating, I mean, I think they're just, and a lot of times, you don't get enough from when they say, "It's because I don't like it," you know what I mean? It might be the only thing that you get, so I think it's maybe a way to elicit additional information. The zoning administrator never rejects an appeal based on grounds, he only would kick it if it was late, and even then, he's, I mean, the practices, he still takes it and sends it upstairs.
Well, that's where my concern...
It's the board that makes a determination, he's simply saying, based on Section Three, that it's an application complete, and then moves it to him.
That's my concern about having the person try to define why they are aggrieved, I think if they tell their story about why they're appealing, then that question of where they're aggrieved can be made by someone other than the zoning administrator kicking them out originally because they didn't, I don't know, I'm just, we can talk about it more.
Sure, I don't think the intent was to kick anybody out, I think it was just to establish a basis, moving forward for, you know, whether the appeal is, you know, when it goes to, before the board, what the facts are behind, not only the circumstances on the property, but the circumstance of the person that's objecting, you know, the reasons why they're objecting.
So, are you, is that... Any colleagues, anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Okay, that's the President, yes, Joan, Ms. Floyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page 330, from lines two through 34.
Two through 34.
I have a number of comments, and all of them can be resolved by simply using the language from the annotated Code of Maryland land use article.
From the what?
The land use article that Ms. Petro mentioned earlier. All of my concerns can be addressed by simply using the language from the land use article. I don't, I don't understand the basis for using different language, but I'll pick out a couple of different things, I'll draw your attention to a couple of different things in this draft. Within lines three to eight, the terms...
Line three to eight?
The terms, and throughout the page, actually, the term zoning administrator is used, but the state land use article uses the term administrative officer or unit, doesn't just limit it to zoning administrator, it consistently uses the term administrative officer or unit. So, that would, in and of itself, would be helpful to use the same terminology that the land use article uses. That is something that actually goes beyond page 331, it goes into page 330, goes beyond 330 to go into 331 as well, that's several places here. The language about who can appeal, we have that in the state code, we don't have to rewrite that weekend, I mean, I can provide this to you if I need to. If I go to Section B2, which is on, begins on page 15?
Line 15?
Yes, sir. We were just talking about the filing of the appeal. Well, the land use article requires the notice of appeal to be filed directly with the board. You file it both with the zoning administrator and the board, I believe, but again, it's, you file it with the administrative officer or unit that you're appealing and with the board, okay? Doesn't have to be cleared by someone on the first floor to go up to the 14th. If you look at B3, which is on line, begins on line 19 and goes to line 22, this is a conflict with the land use article. We just talked about the zoning administrator looking something over, the land use article does not give the zoning administrator power to do that, he's the one being appealed. He does not have the power to determine whether an appeal should proceed to the board. The land use article, and I'm citing 10-405(c), requires the official being appealed to transmit the record, transmit the board, to the board, all papers upon receiving the notice of appeal.
I think we'd have to, I do understand, I believe, the intent here, but if you recall back in Title III, where we very clearly delineate people's titles and roles, and that was done in the sort of pursuit along Councilwoman's craft lines, that we need to make it in clear English, and in Baltimore City, the title of, you know, whatever, it's at the state level, is the zoning administrator, and those duties and responsibilities are very clearly outlined to him. If there's something missing or incorrectly stated as to the zoning administrator's duties per the land use article, I think it should be clearly done in Title III, which we've talked about, and then use, again, the common language, which people in Baltimore City know, which is zoning administrator.
Okay, Councilman Craft?
I understand that, but I do want to follow up on what Ms. Floyd's saying, because it is the concern that I was raising before, I mean, it highlights the concern I was raising before about the President's last amendment, because when you say, "If the zoning administrator determines the notice of appeal is timely and complete," and when we say "is complete," and we have to go back and talk about whether the person is an aggrieved person, you know, when we make that one of the factors that has to be considered in determining whether the application is complete...
It's not a factor in that determination, that is not.
It's what the form, what the President's amendment says is, "The notice of appeal must be filed with the zoning administrator in the form and specify the grounds for the appeal and the reason the person is aggrieved," okay? The only person who can appeal is a person aggrieved by the decision or an officer department blah, 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 of the city. So, if the person, if the administrator looks at it and says, "I've looked at it, and this person is not aggrieved," or "I don't believe..."
No, it's just a fill-in-the-blank.
That's not what she just said. She just said, you can explain, you fill out the portion and explain why you are, what your grounds are, and you're going to be explaining why you think you're aggrieved, okay? If the person reads it and says...
Why you think you're aggrieved is different than leaving it blank and not putting any information, the administrator's not, he just wants something written there.
Well, I think it depends on who the administrator is and what they think their things are, because let me tell you, we have a lot of people that hold a lot of positions in this city that read things and say, "That isn't what, this doesn't qualify," or "This doesn't allow you to do it," or this, and I think that if we're going to have something like this, we have to make sure that it is clear, it can't be misinterpreted, and that some person at this level can't kick it out so that the person to whom it's supposed to get doesn't get the opportunity to hear it.
Would you want additional language? Is it what you're looking at, additional language?
No, deletion, you're asking deletion of the amendment.
I'm not, I think the amendment's a problem.
Just to, I think it might help to, the zoning administrator in this instance is more like a check-in clerk for the BMZA, in that when you go, you have to go to the first floor first, you fill out your application, you get the, to make sure that it's timely and, to make sure that it's filed timely.
The zoning administrator's a decision-maker in the city.
No, not at this stage.
But in many cases, the zoning administrator makes decisions, and it's very, I think you're putting a difficult burden on a zoning administrator to decide, "When am I a clerk and when am I a decision-maker?"
Well, the only thing he's deciding is if it's timely and if it's complete, and what it means by...
In this instance...
In this instance, yes, for any appeal.
But, I understand that, but that's not what the zoning administrator does in many, many instances.
I agree, I agree, but that's what the code's asking him to do here, and that's what he does now.
Again, it's page 70 and 71, the duties, I think it's fairly clear there, and I believe this is all consistent with land use law, so, and we attempted to write page 70 and 71 in pretty clear language.
Okay, you talk about the whole page 70, according to his duties, yeah, we can...
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed it, but I think to Ms. Floyd's concern, if there's something missing or needs to be correlated better with state law, this would be the place to do it.
Okay.
You know, if we need to add a phrase there that says, you know, in this, in Baltimore, the zoning administrator is the administrative officer of, as outlined in land use article, but that would be the place to do it, not, yeah, not to change it here.
Okay.
But I would defer to law if it's necessary.
Okay.
I just urge everyone to look at the land use article, because what's, what Councilman Craft is objecting to, and I'm objecting to, is basically giving a task or giving a duty or a power to the zoning administrator, which he does not have under state law, his only duty, when appealed, under state law, is to send it upstairs, that's all he's supposed to do, he must, he must.
That's all this section says.
That's, no, I think, I think Councilman Craft is saying, he doesn't read it that way, and I don't read it that way either.
If that's Title III, we'll have to, I'm not going to go back into Title III.
In this title, that's all this says.
Okay.
Going, moving through the section C, lines 24 to 33, again, just use the land use article's language for that section, which is found in State Land Use Article 10-405d. Then, going down the page before line 34, add a section that deals with a hearing so that this can conform to Land Use Article 10-405e, is something that's just been, is missing. And again, just generally, use the terminology from the land use article, use the powers and duties in the land use article, everything is solved if we just do that one thing.
Thank you. What else we got? Page 230, you trying? Come on, babe.
It's 330, huh?
Got anything on 331?
Can I ask a question?
You have, Councilman Craft's got a general question?
Yeah, can I, Elena? And this is something, I don't know whether we have to deal with it right now, but I just want to ask you about it, and it's about the stays. You know, the stays are a problem, because we get rulings that, you know, folks, particularly when we have clear violations, and people are supposed to stop doing something, and everybody knows they're supposed to stop doing something, and they appeal, and they get the decision stayed, and then they just go and do what, you know, they complete what they were supposed to have stopped doing, and, you know, how do we get around that? I mean, how do we...
We were somewhat constrained by the land use article, because that provides for when stays can take place and when you can get the restraining order, you know, and things like that, so we are somewhat constrained by the wording of the state law with regard to that.
Can we make them, like, post a bond or something? Is there, can we tie a bond to it, so when they, you know, if they want to stay, can they, can we make a post and bond against what the potential damage is or something?
I mean, it doesn't say in the state law that you can't, so I imagine we could make it, the requirements more stringent.
I mean, can we look at that and come up with something? Because, you know, I mean, we have people that get a stop work order, and they, you know, and they appeal it, and it's stayed, and, you know, and by the time it gets... it stayed, and, you know, and by the time it gets through the hearing, they built the thing, you know? And then, and then they come in and argue, "It's a hardship because we spent $250,000 to build it and you're going to make us take it down and we'll just pay a fine." And, you know, and then, you know, the whole thing's...
You want to put some little more teeth into the stay provisions.
I'm sorry?
You would like to see the state provisions have some more teeth to them. That would actually, you know, be a deterrent.
We want the stay to make them stop, you know?
Right. It would be an actual deterrent to continuing the violation.
Right. I mean, if, if, if they, they just keep to do what they were doing in the first place because they file an appeal, then the initial decision's worthless.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
If we can find, find some way to do that.
You want to work one out or you want that?
Yeah. Can you, can you come up with something for us?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're starting with page 330, 331. Anyone have a memo from page 331?
It would be in all those, it would be in all those state provisions.
What, it's all state?
Yeah.
There was one on...
331?
There was just one from the city agencies from law on 331. I believe it was delete line 22.
Where's it at? Is that Housie?
It's on our sheet. Was that right? Line 22 on page 331 was your deletion?
Originally, I'm sorry.
Line...
331, line what?
Is it 22 that you wanted?
It is 22.
22.
But we are withdrawing that because that is actually the language in the state law. So we're going to leave it as is.
That was on the joint agency spreadsheet, but that was done by mistake?
Yeah. Well, we didn't realize state law says exactly that, so we're just going to leave it be.
I can't understand. I mean, so what you're saying is on page 331, B on line 22, you just review or file?
Delete the, our amendment titled 19-1. So leave it as is. In other words.
Exactly.
Delete what now?
Delete the agency's amendment 19-1 and leave the text as is.
Okay. So are we finished?
That's it.
Kara, you, Ms. Floyd?
Mr. Chair, I have the same comment on this section, lines 12 through 22. Just use the language from the land use code. It's very clear. It says, "A decision of the board," and it's, it's very clearly stated. It's 10-501-A of the land use article, and we should just be using that language.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else on page 331? Unless anyone else that could conclude. Okay, on page 320, 332, we have from line one to three. Anyone on, on 332? No?
Oh, just for the record, for the audience, beyond that line, oh, did you want me, okay. The remainder of your text are cross-reference corrections to other aspects of the city code where zoning was mentioned. And so whether it's the building code or traffic or property maintenance, so the remaining pages are all those cross-references. And my suggestion would be that the committee do one final review of this after all your other amendments are made because this is really a cleanup piece and not discuss it in substance now. This would be, but if, the committee is likely making amendments elsewhere, and so we would want to clean this up at the very end.
Okay. Okay, our next work session on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning is to be announced at the next City Council meeting. I want to thank everyone for attending tonight's land use and transportation work session. Please check around your area and make certain that you take everything that you brought with you. So, thank you very much.